Okay, regular meeting for Tangi Falls Parish School Board called to order for August 18th. We'll start with the roll call, Ms. Jenkins.
Oh, wait, I'm gonna look that up.
Ms. Richards?
Here.
Mr. Toller?
Here.
Ms. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Wes Moreland?
Present.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Dominguez?
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please join us by standing, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Simmons if she would to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to consider to approve the minutes from our board meeting of August the 4th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Simmons?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Abrams? Roll call, ma'am, sorry. Electronic voting?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item 2A, recognized in 2019 and 2020, all academic composite team. Mr. Vit, front and center, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Toller.
Thank you.
Could I have you and Ms. Stilly come forward, please?
Yes, please.
Appreciate it. I'm gonna turn around. Thank you, Board, for this opportunity to... Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Vit, and I'm coordinator of athletics for Tangi Falls Parish School System. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing some amazing young men and women. These student athletes have maintained a 4.0 GPA for eight semesters in high school. The time and dedication it takes for this achievement of this award is incredible. This is a wonderful accomplishment, not only for them, but also their parents and guardians. And I'm sorry I stumbled. I'm showing my age. I gotta get my glasses out, excuse me. The first young man I'll recognize is Coy Diship. Coy, come forward, please. Coy earned this award not only for football, but for also for track and field. Coy, congratulations. Will Coy's mother and father and mother stand up, please, so he can be recognized? The next young lady I'll recognize is Cameron Ernst. Cameron is from Ponchatula High School, and she received this award in volleyball. Is Cameron's parent here, please? Can I stand up, please? And I guess Cameron has her other half, too, right?
Yeah.
And that's Chloe Ernst. Come forward, Chloe. Chloe received this award for volleyball, and she is from Ponchatula High School also. Next is Abby Edwards. Abby received the award in girls' basketball, and she's from Jules Sumner. Is Abby's mother right on the mic? Please stand up. Thank you. Next is Brennan O'Neill. Brennan received the award in baseball, and he's from Hammond. Brennan's parents, will y'all stand up, please, and be recognized? And last is Madison Gill. Madison received the award in girls' basketball, and she's from Ponchatula High. Madison's parents here? There she is. And also, please, our coaches stand up from Ponchatula that are here to support their students, too. Thank you all for coming. This is a wonderful award. This is only a few. We still have more to recognize at our next school board meeting. We're very proud of these young adults. They've already started or fixing to start college. Some have already moved in. Some are fixing to get ready to move, so they are representing Tangi Falls Parish, and we are very proud. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Vit. All right, item 3A, video presentation by Michelle Gallo from Crime Stoppers Tangi Falls Parish. Dr. Hurst.
Good evening, Board. Ms. Stilly. The Tangi Falls Parish School System Student Services Department under the direction of Mr. Porter, along with his ongoing partnership with the local Crime Stoppers program, is relaunching P3 tip management, a fully integrated anonymous tip acquisition and tip management solution for crime stoppers, programs, law enforcement agencies, and school safety. Ms. Michelle Gallo, which is the executive director, is with us tonight to present to and inform the Board and public about this awesome school safety technology strategic prevention model for our students and our teachers, and also for the community. So she's going to come up now and explain the program, which we talked about in last year. We kind of got it started, but then we had a setback, but now it has fully launched, and she has worked very hard since she's come on board to get the program started, so we appreciate it.
I want to thank Dr. Hurst for giving us the green light and getting this project moved pretty quickly over the summer. I do want to take a moment and let you know that Julie White and Charlie Vance worked very hard on this project. They actually created the videos along with our Tangi School students. They were the actors. Dr. Mole came up with this idea, and it was amazing. As soon as Dr. Hurst gave me the okay, we ran with it. I also want to mention Donna Blitz and Alexa Hookfin, I'm sorry, is here tonight. She is on our committee, and we've worked really hard over the summer to get this project done for the school year. Of course, I want to thank the school system for the financial assistance. To give you a quick explanation on what P3 means, it's a reporting app, and students are able to report acts of violence, mental issues, to, in an anonymous way. It actually, the tip actually goes to multiple school administrators as well as law enforcement to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks. You're gonna see two videos. They're situations acted out by students, and then they're gonna show you how they use the app to send the anonymous tip. The first one is gonna be the middle school. We have a middle school and a high school. So the first one will be middle school.
The Tangi Falls Parish School System is pleased to partner with Crime Stoppers of Tangi Falls to provide the anonymous reporting system, P3 Tips. P3 is to assist us in keeping our students in schools safe. Students can report a wide range of concerns, including mental health issues, presence of drugs and weapons, as well as threats of violence, using the P3 mobile app or through any web browser at p3campus.com. Educators are well aware that students often know things that adults on campus do not. When students choose to share this information through a platform like P3 Tips, tragedies can be prevented. As we begin a new school year, we hope that you'll choose to use the P3 Tips program with us. The following video was produced to illustrate reportable issues.
Hello, Brooke.
Hey.
How's Luke?
What do you mean?
He is such a hump.
We don't blame you one bit.
Excuse me?
We saw you.
Saw me what?
Making out with Luke during PE when we were at the stadium. You two snuck off, but we saw you. How do you think Heather and your mom would react?
I thought Heather was like your best friend.
You know, I wonder what the principal would do if she found out.
Please, y'all, it was a one-time thing. It would really hurt Heather if my mom would kill me.
You know, we're sick of you being little is perfect around here.
Yeah, you walk around here like you're better than everybody. I do not. I just try to be friendly.
Especially with Luke.
You're so vulnerable. We're gonna bring you down a peg.
And your friendship with Heather? Well, you can forget that.
We have a picture, and we're gonna post it. No, please don't.
Too late. It's done. Bye, Brooke.
What's wrong, Brooke? I might as well be dead. Don't say that. It's true. I'm gonna be the laughingstock of the whole school, and Heather will hate me.
What are you talking about?
You'll find out soon enough, but I'm not gonna be here to be everyone's joke.
Tell me what you are talking about.
No, and just forget about me. No one will be laughing and pointing at me. I'd rather die first. Brooke, wait, stop!
What our characters, Becca and Sydney, did was terrible. We bullied and shamed Brooke so much that she was considering suicide. And Lindsay, being a true friend, used the P3 Tap the App to anonymously report her fears about her friend. The app is so easy to download. Just go to Google Play or the Apple Store, search for "P3 app" and download. Then if someone you care about is in trouble from bullying, violence at home, drugs, alcohol, weapons, texting, or suicidal thoughts, you can report them anonymously. So tap the app and be a friend.
The Tangi Falls Parish School System is pleased... The Tangi Falls Parish School System is pleased to partner with Crime Stoppers of Tangi Falls to provide the anonymous reporting system, P3 Tips. P3 is to assist us in keeping our students in schools safe. Students can report a wide range of concerns, including mental health issues, presence of drugs and weapons, as well as threats of violence, using the P3 mobile app or through any web browser at p3campus.com. Educators are well aware that students often know things that adults on campus do not. When students choose to share this information through a platform like P3 Tips, tragedies can be prevented. As we begin a new school year, we hope that you'll choose to use the P3 Tips program with us. The following video was produced to illustrate reportable issues.
All right, y'all, we finish the roll.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, lovebirds, break it up, break it up.
Ooh, no way. All right, come on, you two, get out. All right, the guys are gone. Time for some girl talk.
I'll get the ice cream.
I brought my favorite snack, Shake Mix!
I think Dylan likes you, Molly.
Oh, no way. Him and Morgan are kind of a thing, and I would never do that to her. By the way, he's way too controlling.
I hate that. She shouldn't put up with that.
Mm-hmm. What did I walk into?
Me and Raina were talking about how controlling Dylan is.
Yeah, he is, Morgan.
I know. He's just so cute. But he's way too disrespectful, and he's way too old. I wouldn't involve myself with someone like that. Don't you know what happened to Maddie?
Gosh, I'll deal with him.
Is that Dylan?
Does he have a brother that's nicer?
Aw, he's so cute.
Yeah, not really. He reminds me of Maddie's boyfriend. He seems really aggressive.
Hey, guys, what do y'all do?
Nothing, nothing.
Neela, Neela.
What do you mean?
She probably get in here before she gets in trouble.
She shouldn't put up with that.
I know. Ice cream?
I'm good.
Her mom wouldn't like him coming around the house.
Mm-mm.
Oh, he's so aggravating. I'm so done with him.
Down your woes.
That's what I need.
Yeah. You know, he kind of reminds us of Maddie's boyfriend.
True.
You know she tried to commit suicide?
Seriously?
She was reaching out for help and showing all the signs, but no one believed her because of how desensitized teens are to suicidal thoughts nowadays. Everyone's always saying, "Go kill yourself," or, "I'm gonna kill myself," and think it's a joke. It's not funny.
I can't believe anybody would do that. Maddie's boyfriend literally pressured her into sex and left her. He made her do drugs and other things that were just horrible. She told me she was gonna down a whole bottle of pills and just end it.
I didn't know it was that serious.
That's awful. Luckily, I had the P3 app. I made an anonymous tip, and she doesn't know it was me, so don't tell her.
Who else would I tell?
You all. I'm glad that I did it, though. She learned her worth.
I know that had to be hard, Danny. I'm glad you had the app.
Yeah, me too.
The app is called P3. All Danny had to do was tap the app to anonymously report the situation. The app is easy to download. You can take out your phone and do it with me now. Go to Google Play or the Apple Store, search "P3 app" and download. Then, if you or a friend is in trouble, you can help them anonymously. Tap the app and be a friend.
You stole some names and the house.
I stole some names, too, from our kids. Just if everybody would give a big round of applause for this. They did this over the summer, and it was a great project.
Michelle, are some of those actresses, are they here tonight?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Charlie here, Buck's here? No, they're not here tonight.
I see Charlie. Thank you, ma'am. It's great. Appreciate your help.
Charlie Vance is here? No, they're not here tonight.
I just want to recognize them if they were here.
They were great. They were great. So, any questions or anything? I plan to get with Dr. Hurst, and we'll plan a rollout for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, on to item 2, item 4, committee reports. Item 4A, do I hear a motion that we accept our Capitol Outlay Committee from August the 4th? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Duncan?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Simmons. Any discussion? Public input? If not, call for electronic voting?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item 4B, Personnel Committee from August the 4th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
I make a motion to accept.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Dominguez, seconded by Mr. Westmoreland. Any questions, discussion? Any public input? Hearing none. We'll call for electronic vote.
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and before we move on, I'd like the superintendent to introduce one of our new assistant principals.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Amanda McDaniel, who is the new assistant principal at Parent-Ole. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few things?
Can you say I'm a panda?
Yes.
I would first like to thank Ms. Stilly and the Board for allowing me the opportunity to serve as assistant principal at Parent, and for allowing me to speak tonight very briefly. A huge thank you to my family, some who are here, some who are not here, but they're watching at home. Without you, I would not be here tonight, so I want to thank you for that. I would also like to thank the many school leaders that I have worked for in this parish who have encouraged me in leadership roles that at times I didn't even know that I was ready for. I will carry the experiences, relationships, and knowledge with me in this new role. Lastly, to my new parent family. On my first day with them, I teared up, telling them how much I was gonna miss my old people, but being with them for only two weeks, it already started to feel like home. And I'm very proud to serve with them, and I'm very proud to be a parent panda.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Item 4C, Policy Committee from August 13th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept that report? Motion to adopt. Motion made by Mr. Westmoreland?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dominguez. Any questions, discussion, or public input? Hearing none. A call for electronic voting?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to, for 5A, I would like to ask the Board to consider approval of the Certificate of Substantial Completion for the Woodland Park Magnet School North Drainage Upgrade Project by Warner Trucking Incorporated.
Do I hear a motion? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Duncan? Seconded by Ms. Simmons. Any discussion, questions, or public input? Hearing none. A call for electronic voting?
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 5B, I would like to ask the Board to consider approval of the Certificate of Substantial Completion on the Hammond Eastside Magnet School Floor Replacement Project by MBD Maintenance LLC.
Do I hear an informed motion?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion made by Ms. Dominguez? Second. Seconded by Mr. Westmoreland. Any discussion? Questions, or public comment? Hearing none. We'll open up electronic voting.
Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes unanimously.
5C, I do have a few updates I would like to update the Board and the public tonight on, in regards to, you know, starting back to school. First of all, I want to say that the start was a very smooth start for the school year, especially considering we're in the middle of a pandemic. Having the lower numbers on campus during our soft start has been really helpful to our school staff, from transportation, food service, and the employees at every school. Just as a reminder, August 24th, which is Monday, this coming Monday, all of our pre-K through 6th grade students will attend school in the buildings unless the parent has opted for the full virtual model. Also, on the 24th, grades 7 through 12 will be doing virtual, full virtual, with the exception of students with significant disabilities who will be in our buildings, and transportation will be provided for those students. Secondly, I want to provide an update to you on devices. We are on schedule for our distribution of Chromebooks. We're actually a little ahead of schedule on the distribution of those Chromebooks, and as you know, we started first with our 7 through 12 students who are full virtual, which is approximately about a little over 9,000 students, which is about half of our student enrollment in the parish. Those will be completed before the end of this week, and our next wave of distribution is our K6 students, who will be full virtual by choice, by family choice, and this is approximately 2,300 students in K6 who have opted to go full virtual. Following our K6 students who will be in the building will be our next distribution of Chromebooks. I also want to talk about the Wi-Fi access, and just to make sure that the public is aware of what we're doing in terms of the Wi-Fi. The district has the mobile hotspots available for families who request one through our link on our website and Facebook page. Families who would like to receive a mobile hotspot need to do two things. Number one, they need to complete the mobile hotspot survey on tangyschools.org homepage, and when called to pick up the hotspot, they would just bring in their signed form to receive the hotspot on the pickup day. There's only one hotspot assigned to each household, and preference, of course, are for those students first who do not have internet capability in their home at this time. Forms should be signed by the child's parent. However, another designee can bring the signed form and pick up the device for the family at the day and time that the school has set. And so the hotspot distribution schedule will be released by each individual school in the parish, and they will notify the parents of that school who have asked and requested a hotspot Wi-Fi access. In addition to that, and I think approved tonight on the revised budget for this, we also put Wi-Fi boosters in every one of our schools so that the Wi-Fi access is extended out on the school grounds, similar to what the library does across the parish. You know, if you go pull up on the outside of the library, you can actually use their high-speed internet. So we have done that as well on all of our school campuses, from Kentwood to Ponchatula. And so if a student is having to download something that requires, you know, a lot of bandwidth in their particular area in which they live, they don't have the best service, they can use our school internet in all of our schools. Beginning on August 24th, which is Monday, we will begin doing our, conducting our student counts on all the students that are riding our school buses, and this will help us to determine the capacity of having additional students on our school buses and in our school buildings. Once we do the counts, we will reexamine those routes, and we will communicate out to the public by Labor Day to let the public know about which grade bands we can fold into the in-person, you know, in the classroom learning, starting with our 7th and 8th grade. Students in K6 who have selected the option of full virtual will have virtual teachers contacting them. Keep in mind that we have over 3,200 students in K6 that have requested full virtual model, so please be patient. We expect to have all these calls made, which is a contact to the parent, by the end of this week. The child's school will be distributing the Chromebooks to those students, along with Tier 1 workbooks. So there's like a Eureka Math consumable workbook, and then perhaps an English or a reading workbook for students, and those will also be disseminated through the school in which the student attends. So tonight, finally, I want to talk a little bit about isolated cases of individuals that are... that have tested positive for COVID-19. We have a very, and it's not a question of if it's going to happen, but it's when that happens. We do have a very specific process for identifying who is in close contact of those individuals. Close contact is determined to be closer than six feet for a period of 15 minutes or longer. And it can extend 48 hours before symptoms ever started. So that's the definition that we've been advised to use by Department of Health and Hospital. So if we get a report of an individual that has tested positive, that's what we look for. We contact them, we find out who they were in close contact with, which is six feet, closer than six feet, for an extended time of 15 minutes or longer, to do the contact tracing. In addition to that, we look at, you know, the 48 hours prior to, that they started having the symptoms. And then we contact those individuals and ask them to isolate until, unless they are symptom-free or they're tested or both. We have communicated this extensively to our principals and staff. Also, really over-communicating to the point of our staff about, you know, keeping the six feet distance from each other, masks, you know, wearing your mask, and all those things, washing hands and things that we can do to avoid contact and the spreading of the disease. Last, I want to just thank all of our employees. I know we have some here tonight, but there's many other. You know, we have, Mr. Jinko, how many employees?
30? 2,800.
2,800, full-time employees. And I can tell you, from the bus drivers to the school staff, you know, food service, everyone pulling together. I appreciate you and the board. We appreciate the commitment of our employees during this very difficult time. And we want to thank you for what you do for our students every day. And at this time, I'll stop. And if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But overall, a great start to the year. Went very smoothly. And our principals are requesting that we continue a soft-start concept after the pandemic. Maybe not the four days, but maybe a one- or two-day soft start with certain groups of students. It really helps with like fixing issues with student schedules in high school. You know, they have the wrong schedule or the wrong class. Smaller numbers there, you can fix those very quickly. And then also with our young children, really teaching them and taking time for them to understand the protocols and all those things on the first few days of school. So it's been, that was a great thing, and I think everyone really appreciated that.
Ms. Simmons?
Yeah, I know you've probably told us about this, but I might have missed it. On the contact sports, is there a date that they're going to have it or never have it?
There are dates, and of course, that's determined by the Louisiana High School Athletic Association. And I think that they have some tentative dates, maybe for football in October, something like that.
October 8th.
Yeah, and they can do some practices with 10 or less, no contact. But all of that's really guided by the High School Athletic Association.
Any others?
Ms. Stilly have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Good to see you tonight. Chromebooks, some of them were not new. Some of them were used. Replacement value, will they be the same? I'm getting that question quite a bit. If something happens to them, and the ones that were issued used ones, we know how technology is. It could break tomorrow. So do you have a number, how many used Chromebooks were issued versus new Chromebooks?
I do not. I do not have that number. But I agree that perhaps the value of a brand-new one versus one that has been used is different. And so I know we have the inventory on all of that.
Right.
And so, you know, that...
Mine hasn't broke his already, so I'll just check. I'm just...
I don't have those numbers, Ms. Bush.
Ms. Stilly, second question. Didn't you say 3,200 K-6?
K-6, as of today, 3,200 families or students have opted to do the full virtual.
About 712. Do we have a number on that?
Well, 712 is all virtual.
I'm talking about...
In Phase 2.
If we go back to school, have they made that, the ones that have made that selection?
So what we would do, whenever we move out of Phase 2, we would double, we would check with those parents. And if they want to opt to stay in the full virtual, they would have that opportunity to do that. They can do that.
Are we expecting 3,000 of those also? Just curious, if we don't know yet.
I'm not expecting that, no.
Last question, and I know this is, we're just now getting this started. Governor Edwards puts us in Phase 3 the last week because he's meeting again, this runs out on the 28th. How quickly could we get our high school guys and girls in there, Group A, Group B?
That's a good question. Once we reach Phase 3, you know, we'll have the bus capacity. We can have 75%, which increases a great deal. So what our plan is for Phase 3 is to fold in our 7 through 12, at the very least, on our alternating schedule. That's going to depend on those bus counts again, because, you know, if we have room on those buses, we're going to, we want them all to be there.
Took it happen pretty quickly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Once we move into that phase.
Any others?
I'd just like to make, Ms. Stilly, that's double the number that we had, who had elected to take the virtual learning courses than the last time that we heard the report.
Right. I think we, I think that was probably, what, a week or so ago, we were together for a little meeting. And at that time, I think we had 600 for kindergarten through 6th grade. Yes.
Okay, that's, for me, that's very encouraging. You know, that's very encouraging.
Yeah, so 3,200 as of today. And, you know, one of the things is we're not, we do not have a hard deadline on that, because we feel like that there could be some families that decide even, you know, in the next couple of weeks that they want to do full virtual because of the COVID-19. And we don't want to take that opportunity away from them.
And I most certainly don't want to promote fear, except that, you know, it's a factor of respecting this pandemic that we're facing, so that anyone who does decide to attend these classes will take every precaution and follow them to the letter, you know, and not break the rules about the safety precautions.
That's right.
Any others? All right, we'll move on to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6A, Consider Resolution Honoring the Life of Ms. Joyce Marie Moore. Ms. Richards.
I want to ask Mr. Moore to come down. Hang in. Tom and Ms. Stilly, please. It is such an honor to stand here and to present this resolution. Very humbling experience. Whereas, in 1965, Mr. and Mrs. M.C. Moore filed a desegregation suit on behalf of their children to end racial discrimination in the Tangsboro Parish school system. And whereas, Ms. Joyce Marie Moore continued to lead the charge in representing the entire class of Black students in Tangsboro Parish. And whereas, the Tangsboro Parish School Board recognized the historical significance of Ms. Joyce Marie Moore and family to the school system. And whereas, the Tangsboro Parish School Board recognized their fight for equity and educational excellence for children of Tangsboro Parish. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Tangsboro Parish School Board does hereby extend to Ms. Joyce Marie Moore's family the condolences of the members of the Tangsboro Parish School Board and the loss of their beloved mother, sister, and aunt, who will long be remembered. And it's signed by the nine board members and the superintendent, Ms. Melissa Stilly. Would the Moore family please stand?
And on behalf of my family, you know, I would just like to say that Joyce represent, her name was the name that was presented on the Desegregation Act as the named plaintiff. But she had, as you see here, a tremendous and a wonderful support system. She never felt as though she was in this fight by herself. And she was a torch carrier. You know, and the torch carrier always gets targeted first. But that torch is now passed on, and we have as many family members as you see here who are part of the assembly who will carry that torch on from this point on. And we love her, we miss her, but she lives on forever in the minds and the hearts and the dispositions of every member of the family, because we were one. There's never been more unity and love and devotion to each other that I have known. And I would love to present this to the oldest member of the family here tonight. But Ms. Stilly has just announced that they're going to frame it, so that, so that'll have to wait. But I just want to extend my appreciation to the board for the sincerity and the support that I have received from them. And a special thanks to my family for being here tonight.
Mr. Moore, is that family member present tonight? Is that family member present, the one that you mentioned?
Yes, yes, my sister, Catherine Moore.
Catherine, where are you?
I think it's in your best interest not to mention her age, Mr. Moore.
She looks younger than you, Mr. Moore. I'm not sure. We need to check it out.
Mr. Tollard?
I know that we've all signed the resolution, but I would like for us to go ahead and put an official vote in support of the resolution in the minutes.
Absolutely. Shall I hear that in form of a motion?
Ms. Richards makes that motion, I believe.
I'll take that as a form of a motion from Ms. Richards.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Duncan. Any discussion? All right, electronic voting, please.
Voting is open.
And the electronic voting seems impersonal on this, so I'd also like to add a voice vote, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure, sure. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Dominguez?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Tollard?
Yes.
Ms. Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Absolutely.
Mr. Moore?
Absolutely.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Wes Moreland?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm going to start to our right tonight, Board Member Comments. Ms. Dominguez?
Just want to congratulate everybody for working so hard these last few days. And I know we have four more days, we're on three more days now of the soft start. I've talked to quite a few of the employees, and I have texted all my principals, and everybody seems to be rolling right along. I haven't gotten really any complaints. I've just gotten compliments. I have noticed some Facebook comments, but mostly they're just asking questions because they're just kind of confused about what to do. And I think some of them could have been answered by their children. However, the children know a lot more than the parents do, so the parents are nervous. So I just want to thank again everybody for working so hard, and especially the administrative staff up here for doing everything necessary to have a good soft start.
Mr. Westmoreland?
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, I want to give a shout-out to Michelle and Dr. Hurst for the presentation that was done tonight. And I also, as I have for the last three or four meetings, want to again express my desire to see as many families homeschool their children. It not only keeps your child safe, it also helps in increasing the distance that we allow, that we can exercise in keeping the children separated. And to all the teachers, you guys have your hands full, and my heart goes out to you. My prayers go, I mean, to the extreme. And I just want to thank you guys for the wonderful job you're doing so far.
Abrams?
Again, I would like to thank Ms. Stilly and the board. We all have been working so hard together to make sure things go smoothly. Ms. Stilly and to the Central Office, thank you so much. We know you are putting in more hours than your job description calls for. And parents, when you're out there and you're typing away on Facebook and you're asking those questions that probably have been answered 50 million times, we know, go to the Tangsboro Parish School Board website. All of your questions can be answered there. Make sure you take that from our website and not secondhand information. That only makes for more controversy. So just make sure that the Central Office, know that the Central Office is updating that every day, so you'll be able to get the right answers that you need. Great job to all the teachers and support staff for doing such an awesome job this week.
Ms. Richards? Mr. Duncan? Ms. Simmons? Mr. Bush?
Ms. McDaniel, where are you back there? Ms. Elsie told me that we're going to change our name to the Parent Green Wave. I don't know about the Pandas. Congratulations, my friend Jerry Moore and your family. Congratulations. It's an honor. Also, my heart broke when I found out you lost a family member. Just want to say my condolences to you, my friend. And also, we did lose another past school board president. Henry Sibley passed away recently. I go to church with Mr. Henry. He was a great man, and I just want to give him and his family a thought. And keep our fingers crossed and keep praying. So far, so good, Ms. Stilly. So whatever you're doing, girl, you're doing it right. Let's keep it going. Let the kids go back to school Monday. And Mr. Hurst and I, we chatted this week, and appreciated Dr. Hurst with all the work he did on that transportation, man, because I know it was a headache. So I know that all the board feels the same way as all your parents. We're easily contacted. Our emails are listed underneath our website. Our phone numbers are there. Feel free to give us a call if we can help you do anything. Thank you.
Absolutely. Once again, Ms. McDaniel, congratulations. condolences to the Moore family. Thank you, and I'm very well put together tonight as far as recognizing that. Being the husband of a school teacher, I actually texted my wife Friday when I was leaving the office to see if I should come home or not, because there's been some days that she's come home in a very ill mood. And so there's a lot of things that are changing. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the staff. I can't say that enough. I really appreciate the teachers, the flexibility and the patience that you're having to do new things and outside-of-the-box thinking. And we, as a public, we appreciate that. We hope that you feel that support. Don't read Facebook because you won't like it. And don't respond because it doesn't help either. But all jokes aside, get your information from our website. We've done a great job of putting together some information on it that really can help a lot. So thanks again. And with that being said, I'm going to turn over to public input. We do have Mr. Lamar. You'd like to address the board? I'll give you your last word. How you doing, Mr. Lamar?
So first of all, good evening.
Good evening. Good to have you tonight.
Superintendent and board. Before I start, I wanted to just recognize again the student athletes who received recognition tonight. It's really an honor to be here and witness that. And also, just an honor of Ms. Joyce Marie Moore and her desire for equity, which really just fits into everything that I wanted to talk about tonight. So I don't know if it was a purpose for me to be here or not, but I didn't have any idea that we'd be having those two discussions. But I'm going to read this for you today. I just wrote some things down, and I'll be quick. My purpose for speaking tonight is to bring the board and the administration's attention to the GPA eligibility requirements for student athletes. It is my goal to... It is my goal to see the eligibility requirement increase from the 1.5 GPA. The majority of athletes who play high school sports dream of playing sports in college, and some even aspire to be, to play professionally. The likelihood of a Tanshawo Parish school system student athlete having the opportunity to play at either level is low, nevertheless, it is achievable. Let's use as an example football. A student has to be three years removed from high school to play professional football. The chances of being drafted to play in the NFL is close to zero without playing college football. The odds of a student succeeding in collegiate football with a 1.5 GPA is even bleaker. Their chances narrow from zero to impossible. So why then do we have a policy that would set the bar so low and allow students to invest their limited time in an area that will not provide them with the opportunity they are seeking? In the end, low GPA athletes won't realize their dream or be equipped for the job market. We justify it by saying, well, if he wasn't playing football, he would be running the streets, or he would not even come to school, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. Instead of creating a policy that ensures that students can perform academically at par with other students, the policy for athletes are designed to allow them to perform below standard. This is a wake-up call for all of us. The unasked question, I'm sorry, the policy disproportionately affects Black males' students who find themselves as victims more than any other race. Intentional or not, it is not easy to see how someone can reach the conclusion that the policy borders on racism. The unasked question is who really benefits? College athletes, or college athletics seems to like, seems like it has evolved to more of a student athletic model. Colleges go as far as to tout their academic support system to sway players and their parents to their universities and colleges. The NCAA, with all of its failures, got this one thing right. Colleges were forced to raise the bar academically or risk not having those players on the field. What if the high schools, what if our high schools had similar rules? What if the new policy met the same standards as colleges? We can create a policy that moves towards the goal to raise GPA requirements to a 2.3 incrementally over a four-year period. We can start preparing our youngsters to be student athletes as early as the sixth grade. By the time they reach high school, students can have better time management, study skills, and ultimately academic performance. Higher standards can serve individual student athletes whether they go to play sports beyond high school or not. We can raise the standard with that, with what I would call an anti-racist policy. In Tanshawo, a policy that can assist in closing the educational achievement gap between students of color and white students. It's a policy on equity, and everybody benefits. The benefits with high standards is that it is not an either-or proposition, it's a both-and. A high-achieving athlete can be a great student. Just as we groom them to accept the challenge of being faster, quicker, and stronger, they can adapt to being better students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamar.
Yeah, Ms. Marshall, I listen, I tell you, this is a concern, it's not, hadn't just come up, it's been a concern for a long time. And I've heard it from individuals in the community, and you and I have talked about it as well. It's a concern of mine. I do believe that it is an issue that the school board should take up, I also believe it is one that should be intrinsically, a community involved. I think that everyone has a personal interest in this, because what disproportionately affects the African-American community, this what eventually affects the entire community, because the entire community has to bear the weight of the effects of that disproportion, if you understand what I mean. So what are you, what are you, what are you suggesting that we do? I know it's a concern.
One point of order, we don't have a motion on the floor, it's just public comment.
Okay.
And our policy is that we don't respond, unfortunately, but we can bring it to policy, we can debate it there in the form of a motion.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion.
Correct on that, Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that we consider possibly forming a committee to put together a study or-
You could make a motion to send it to policy.
Yes.
Well, so the next step that I would certainly support is that before our next full board meeting, the administration needs to put together a recommendation on revisions to the policy that deals with this issue. Then, once it is properly noticed that we are considering those revisions, at the next board meeting, we would refer it to the policy committee, which is where we would have the full discussion on the actual changes. Once that policy committee makes their recommendation, we would then do a final vote on those revisions at the following full board meeting.
Correct.
We knew Mr. Duncan would know the procedure.
And the idea behind that is that, you know, we want to make sure, particularly when we're talking about a change that affects, that is so significant, we want to make sure that we have notified the public multiple times that this is under consideration and what we're talking about doing, and that's why the, that's why the procedure is so involved.
Can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes.
So if, would it be, would it be as you think it would make sense to engage members of the community who might have a specific interest, who might even be able to aid and provide additional feedback?
Absolutely, and that's, and at the level of the policy committee, that's where that interaction would happen.
My point was, if we, if we were having that quiet to a policy committee discussion, it might add more input into. So my recommendation, if I can make a recommendation, would be to allow, allow that to happen, and maybe there's, there should be more of a brainstorming session with individuals in the community like myself who have a really, a real interest in seeing this really become a policy. We're not talking about something that would happen tomorrow, we're talking about something that could potentially, if I were doing it, over a four-year period, so we could incrementally bring it into the system.
Right.
So we could tell a sixth grader, we could tell not just the school system, the principals, the superintendent, but also recreational coaches who are engaging with these young kids, because I was talking to a gentleman last night, that said, most of the times, you know, your recreational coaches identify these kids early on, you know, anybody who knows anything about athletes, you know that they stand out really, really, really early. And if we get everybody in the community around this project, recreation coaches, recreation centers, all, everybody who touches a child, especially who wants to be a successful student athlete, because, you know, if we monetize that activity, and we let people realize that this, this young man or this young woman could potentially be generating 40 to, I mean, 160 to $300,000 of college scholarship money, it's a big deal.
Right.
So if we prepare them properly, then we could both as a community and as a parish to have even more student athletes able to take advantage of those scholarship dollars.
Absolutely, and that interaction that you're referring to will come from, like Mr. Duncan's saying, when the administration works on the policy, to present us that policy with the policy, they can then bring in some stakeholders to help draft the policy.
I'll make myself available for that discussion.
Absolutely, I appreciate your input tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to give a last word to the superintendents, I looked over a while ago.
I don't have anything.
All right, nothing else, meeting adjourned.